Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, November 28th, 2022. I'll call the meeting order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Clark could take us through the agenda for this evening?
Chairman, we have a continued public hearing at 5:30, another public hearing at 6 o'clock, 12 action items and some announcements and stuff from our esteemed town administrator and upcoming meetings and all kinds of good stuff.
Different guy?
So do we have any other type of town administrator?
He's coming in later.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for that update. Start with open forum, is anyone here for open forum? Seeing nobody?
No elections?
Um, nothing to talk? Everything's gone, good.
Thought we had a recon.
Glad we're not Georgia.
Say that again. All right, public hearing for Elizabeth Wilson, DBA, 28 town parties. Hello again?
Hello again.
It is.
So I think the last time we met, maybe I'm getting a little, I had another birthday, so I'm getting a little older. Uh, maybe remind me where we were the last time we met, I know?
Yeah, so I felt like the trailer was kind of scrapped.
Okay.
Beverage trailer idea. Charles got back to me with different permits that would be required and like mobile catering wouldn't really apply to me because you can't serve the public. So my new plan would be to serve only packaged malt beverages and wine in our party barn during birthday parties and other events.
Okay.
So I resubmitted the application with those revisions. That sounds better to you?
Sure.
So we did receive the revised plan from Liz. I sent it along to Police, Fire, DPW, Planning and Building, Board of Health. The only department that had concerns was Board of Health just concerning hand washing stations and portable toilets. She said she would need two hand washing stations and two portable toilets.
If the event exceeded 100 people?
If they exceeded 100.
Okay.
We ordered a second one for the Halloween event anyways, so it's not a problem. I will take it down to one for my off season, which is right now, where it's only pretty small birthday party packages of 10 kids. But I have no problem having multiple porta-potties once we get to March where it gets busy. Okay.
All right, now, we need a motion, obviously, with a soon, right?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application based on the information we've, recent information we received.
All right, wish you may take a second. Any further discussion, Charlie have anything?
No, I mean, I, she may get some questions from the ABCC itself, this because it's not, you know, it's a different type of establishment, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but a different, it's not a pure restaurant or something like that.
Yeah.
So you may be getting more questions from the ABCC than what the board is asking at this point, so just don't be surprised by that.
Okay.
Now, we may have a wonderful beer for you, a bicentennial beer coming up, so.
We'll add you to the list.
Glad you're on the list of.
Happy to support local, that is our mission.
Sounds good.
Penis head first.
I did, I tested it, it was very good.
It's still in the system.
It could be, it's still in my refrigerator. But, yeah, great, well, congratulations.
All right, awesome.
Do you have any further questions for us at all, or?
No, I guess, like, what do I wait for?
So we'll send this over to the ABCC tomorrow morning, and they'll probably contact you to come over for a site visit.
Okay.
And it doesn't really take too long, I mean, a month at the longest, but usually, you know, three weeks maybe.
Okay.
And then they'll give us their answer, and then we'll let you know what they say.
Okay, cool.
All right.
I won't fire up the keg yet, but.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, well, let us know.
Noted, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Wish you may take a second, all in favor?
Aye. Bye, Liz.
Yeah, we got a little bit of time between this and the public hearing.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 7th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Wish you may take a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to review and possibly sign memorandum of understanding between the Town of East Bridgewater and the DPW Teamsters Union Local 653.
Second.
Wish you may take a second, discussion, Charlie?
The board had obviously previously agreed, I mean, you know, we went to town meeting, we got the funding, but we just need signatures on the document, so there's, we're doing this officially tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to review and sign agreement with environmental partners.
Second.
All right, wish you may take a second.
And this is a continuation of the previous agreement, so back in November of '21, the town meeting had approved, I believe, an appropriation of $50,000 for work by environmental partners. The idea being that there were going to be some plans, applications, in essence, that hadn't been filed yet, for instance, review at the track stage, where we would want environmental partners to come in, to take a look at them, or to look at various bylaws or regulations that were being reviewed by the town departments or by the board. In, where we have an actual application, we can charge the applicant for site visits, for peer review and such, but where we don't have applications or where it's the town's business per se, we need, you know, we're having to pay it out of our own funds rather than a third party. The first contract was for a specified amount of $30,000, and that recently, that amount was depleted in the last couple of weeks. I talked with Patrick, with John, and both of them agree we should re-up for the rest of the fiscal year until June of 2023, we've got $20,000 more. The first one lasted approximately a year, so given, you know, the ratios, we should be able to get through the next six and a half, seven months without needing additional appropriation beyond what was done in November. But this winter and this spring, if the departments want to continue this type of relationship, we'll have to find a line item, whether it's the DPW, whether it's Planning or Building Inspector's Office, to continue this on an annual basis.
All right. No, it's worked out very well. I think John just walked in the rooms, I think he'll say as well that being able to have their services, my phone call and whatnot has been great, so. Sounds good. Uh, wish you may take a second, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, action item number four is the night's state's water request. Looking at this, I think before this board could do anything on that, we would have to talk with the planning board on this and see exactly where we're going to be going with this.
Yep.
It's a very convoluted area.
I know the planning board obviously is in favor of moving ahead with this, but I know that it gets complex, and John can speak to that, because we're dealing with a situation sort, in a sense, resembles what we're dealing with a little bit with Brockton, with the sanitary sewer, but in that what we were at, what development is asking is to connect to the Brockton water line. None of the East Bridgewater water lines run anywhere near this parcel of land, or I think John's estimate was at least a half mile away, so it's not a simple matter of laying down some pipe for a few hundred feet. And we'd have to lay the pipe through Brockton to get back into the subdivision, because if you think about the subdivision in the town, in the line between Brockton and East Bridgewater, the first couple of parcels in the subdivision, or the west end of the subdivision, are in Brockton, then the road goes into East Bridgewater and ends in a cul-de-sac, so there's a half a dozen parcels that are over in the East Bridgewater line. You know, it would make sense, if you're going to bring water in, you bring it in from Brockton, especially where the residences that are at the beginning, at the western end of the subdivision, would get Brockton water anyway, they wouldn't get it from East Bridgewater, they're in Brockton. But John can speak to the issues that we have to deal with before we would want to move ahead.
Charlie, you know, addressed numerous, many other issues or considerations that need to be thought of beforehand. Another thing we would need to, obviously, would be a different district within, we'd have to develop a district similar to what we're doing with the other agreements. There needs to be consideration about rates, structure, a number of different things, how that would all be utilized, how that would be constructed, I think, before we could move forward trying to develop any sort of intermunicipal agreement with the city of Brockton for this specific subdivision. So I think that there's a lot of considerations that probably need to be vetted out and thought through before we approach the city about entering into this kind of agreement. I also believe that there's some, you know, previous history with this project that we probably all need to be brought up to speed on a little bit more so.
So John, just correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, I guess this is requesting that the board present this to the Brockton City Council for their okay, I guess?
Correct, it would be, it would essentially be the same process that the town just went through, which took several years with the city of Brockton for our sanitary sewer project, except this.
Yeah.
Except this would be essentially for five households.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah, it's a long, drawn-out process, for sure, and there's a lot of hiccups, let's call them, right, along the way, so.
Considerations.
Yeah, considerations, I like it. So, yeah, we definitely would have to hear from, I would assume, at least, the very least, town council, as David alluded to a couple of minutes ago, where they're, where they're, I also like to get a little background on Brockton, I mean, this isn't something that just came up about, like, two years or three years ago, I think this has been around for
Yeah, in discussions, it would involve, essentially, the process would be, you know, it's infeasible to think that, you know, East Bridgewater is going to run a water main through West Bridgewater into Brockton, down Brockton streets, acquire all those easements that that would require to service, you know, I think at the end it would be five homes.
You're here to discuss the?
Yes, I apologize, I ragged a little bit.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm actually the applicant of record.
Oh, okay, come on up, come on up.
I think I might be able to shed some light on this. Yes, so this is a nine lot.
Your name and?
Ben Carroll.
Okay.
This is a nine-lot subdivision, it's been kicking around for some time, it was originally proposed in 2012 as a seven-lot subdivision that went to land court and came back over a decision in Brockton. The planning board in East Bridgewater at that time voted not to approve the subdivision. We've since completely redesigned this project with, I think, really thoughtful consideration from both the Brockton Planning Board and the East Bridgewater Planning Board. If you've seen the plans, there's two cul-de-sacs, it's extensively sort of engineered road, maybe even a slightly over-engineered road, but the central issue, I think, facing the planning board is this concept of water. We have approved applications for wells, so we can get potable water for these houses through wells. The planning board has expressed that they'd strongly prefer that we use potable water and that we.
What do you say, planning board, Brockton or East Bridgewater?
Both.
Okay.
East Bridgewater Planning Board, they've, I think they've expressed a strong desire for us to have municipal water. It's actually part of the regulations in East Bridgewater that a public way have to have a connection to a municipal source of water, and that's been explained to us from the planning board to mean, essentially, if there was ever some issue in the future where an aquifer were to run dry, those homes would be uninhabitable. That being said, the way I think the decision is written, and the decision has not yet been finalized with East Bridgewater, we could go ahead and construct these houses so long as we lay the pipe in for a future water connection, but I think it's in everyone's best interest here, and the planning board also expressed that there are other reasons the city might want an intermunicipal agreement in place so that they have this sort of existing framework to get water out of Brockton. I think in the act itself, this 1964 Water Act, which I've sort of accidentally become somewhat of an expert in, it actually lays out what the fees would be for water if you're in the district, it's just the prevailing rate of water in the city. I have no qualms that, I think it's absolutely accurate that there's some legwork that'll have to be worked out, but I think it really starts with the decisions to whether or not the select board wants to request water. And I think once they request water, it sort of begins a legal framework by which the applicant could seek to enforce getting water from the city of Brockton. I think getting water from a street line that's in East Bridgewater is just, as we've sort of talked about, it's not practical, and the closest one would be through the Beagle Club, and it just wouldn't, you're talking about miles of pipe.
Right, right. So, yeah, so my concern would be, obviously, well, the first concern is why, you know, it's come this way and we haven't heard from the planning board prior to this, maybe a joint meeting of some sort would be helpful to get some history, especially from Roy, who's been here, you know, a couple thousand years, I think. So that would help, but, you know, even more importantly would be the fact that, you know, you talk about some legal aspects, you know, and I did have a conversation with John Clifford, town council, this afternoon when I started up on our agenda, and, you know, they have some concerns, not concerns, but, you know, some questions, I guess, would be, so I'd like to see a little bit more communication, and we can certainly do that by, you know, setting up some sort of joint meeting with the, with that board.
I'd be surprised if they didn't have concerns or questions, and I'm more than happy to work.
Yeah, and that would be helpful to have someone like yourself that's been involved for the project and whatnot.
Yeah, and I think a little bit of background, too, is the East, the Brockton Planning Board also approved water, at least the Brockton portion of the subdivision, with the understanding that this was going to be an intermunicipal project.
Recently?
Yeah, I mean, within, and we actually just had to get it extended because it took us over a year to get through the planning board process in East Bridgewater, but I believe that would have been 2021.
Okay.
That was approved. And, I forget where I was going with that.
Well, I don't want to, so is the subdivision approved by the city of Brockton?
It is, absolutely.
So it's an approved subdivision in the city of Brockton?
Absolutely, it's approved and recorded as a two-lot subdivision in the city of Brockton. In all of those meetings, they saw this as a nine-lot subdivision. One of the conditions in Brockton is that we not exceed sort of the total nine lots without going back for additional approval, so they're aware that there's more houses to be built back there.
Okay.
My point here is that the planning board had no issue, it seems to us, with us utilizing water. The process pursuant to Brockton's rules and regulations to get that water is to have the city councillor in the district actually put forward a vote for an intermunicipal water agreement in the city council, and unfortunately, the city councillor in this area strongly opposes the project, so written numerous letters to the planning board saying, you know, I will not put that forward, saying she's had conversations with the mayor, that the mayor will not vote to approve it. So it puts us in a situation where we kind of have to exercise the statute in order to get water that I think everybody sort of intended us to have the whole way through.
Right.
And it's a catch-22.
Yeah.
We thought we were tough.
Yeah, right. We did a few times, too, so we have done an intermunicipal agreement as, what, like a year ago, maybe, a year and a half?
It wasn't much.
Yeah, so, so we certainly know the process, and we certainly know, you know, what we need to do to get to that point. I will say that opposition from any one councillor can be, you know, can be difficult, but, you know, I, what I would say is, at least from our standpoint here, is to get the information from our planning board and then obviously from town council, and, you know, if they're in agreement, then, you know, we could certainly help in the process any way we can, but, you know, until that happens, I mean, myself.
Oh, no, I agree, we don't have enough information to make a decision on this.
But we'll get on it and certainly have Charlie reach out to both the planning board and town council to get more information and set up a meeting as soon as possible, which she'll get an invitation to. Do you guys have his information, too?
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll table that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's 2023 meeting schedule, which should be in front of you.
Please.
Second.
Wish you may take a second, any questions or concerns?
Just on the Monday, May 8th, that is town meeting. And the 22nd would be the Monday following the election, I believe.
It'll be a week and a half.
Week and a half, okay.
Because the Monday following the election would be the 15th.
You're running again tonight.
Hey, no, not yet.
Just asking.
Especially if we're going back to Brockton, no way. All right, so we want to change what we're trying, what are we?
No, nothing.
Oh, okay.
We're just going to approve what I was saying.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to discuss land donation zero Elm Street, parcels 1D, A2-15-0.
Second.
Wish you may take a second.
So I did notify the attorney who's representing the property owners that there's a shed on the property.
Okay.
Origin unknown, but the town has, I mean, we would like the shed to be removed, then it's cleaner and we don't have to worry about that expense at all.
Right.
The reason for the, for the town being interested in accepting the parcel would be simply it is less costly to go that route than to go through the textile route.
Yep.
But at the same time, we'd want the shed, I haven't heard anything back from the attorney, I would just, I'll bring this back to the board on the 12th, I'll tell the attorney, we're waiting to hear back from him or his client about what they plan on doing with the shed. But I think in long term, my hope would be, you know, we accept that, we go to town meeting in May, property's accepted, we then go back to the Butters, for instance, even if it's for a dollar, they get off the town hands. Which are weird, it's an interior lot, there's, unless there's some sort of easement, it's not a buildable lot from what it looks like in terms of the configuration, and there's no direct access, unless it's through an easement, but it does border at least half a dozen lots along, that are actually along the road there.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll just pass it over. Pass it over until we get word back from them on the shed.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to vote to extend the contract with GIC Insurance until June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Wish you may take a second.
This would be for a new three-year agreement with the GIC for the town to be participating in a participating member. Our health insurance experience is horrible, we're running about 130% of claims versus what we pay in premiums, so nobody's interested in us. Even if we were interested in trying to leave, nobody, there would be no suitors, let's put it that way. So we had the group, you know, the employees committee to talk with our advisors, and there were no objections, so everybody's recommending that we would, at least for the time being, continue with the GIC for another three years.
All right, and any questions? Wish you may take a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to discuss purchasing the Stop to Bleed kit for the police department. Do you want the chief to come up and explain?
Second.
Or Michael, or Paul, I don't, whoever. But I can provide a little background. Sergeant McLaughlin, I talked at the Managers Association meeting in Bridgewater back in October, I was in a presentation about active shooter training and why it's necessary. This is sort of a spin-off of that, in that we, there's interest here, a town hall, maybe with the other departments about having a training, but Stop the Bleed is training for, okay, if you do have an incident, can you stabilize individuals who were injured in the incident until the medical help arrives? And a kit, there's a kit that is appropriate for this training, is about $1,000, I've added another $100 in case there's a shipping or ancillary cost to that. I talked with the Finance Committee about doing a reserve fund transfer, because obviously this was not anticipated, they indicated they were prone to say, whether it's the selectman or the police department, we'd like you to spend your own money first before coming back to us, if you need money at the end of the year, because you purchased that, maybe we'll consider doing a reserve fund transfer, so that's where things stand right now.
So we're all trained in, I mean, we, we learned how to stop the bleed, we do the tourniquets, we do it annually in service. This is more like a kit, we sent some of our offices to this Sergeant McLaughlin, a couple others, for the free training, for, it's more intensive training, but then Sergeant McLaughlin, in turn, became an instructor in it, so now he would have the ability to instruct town employees, the school, whoever else would be interested in the town, you know, basically, the Stop the Bleed program. It's mainly for bystanders, it's for, you know, the citizens, you know, before a professional gets there to stop the bleed, if there's a certain situation, obviously, you know, there's a lot of active shooter training going on nowadays, and Sergeant McLaughlin's also a qualified instructor, certified instructor for, you know, some of the active shooter training that he offers, too, like I said, to the town administrators, and he can do it to schools, congregations, et cetera, so this is just, just an addition to that.
All right.
And if you read a little bit about it, I mean, it's out there, it was launched in 2015 by the White House, it's just training that has been brought back by the DOD from Iran, Afghanistan, and it's mainly tourniquet training with hemostat, you know, using hemostat gauzes, et cetera, just to stop the bleed, so it's just in addition to some of the active shooter training. So we don't necessarily need it for us to train our guys, we're trained on it, this kit is more Sergeant McLaughlin, his, now an instructor, he could go out and train other departments within the town, a lot of other towns are doing this, they're training the schools, they're training the town hall employees, you know, whether, you know, certain private organizations, whether it's the Y or congregations, or want to get involved, and this would give Sergeant McLaughlin the ability to have the instructor's kit, which is printed on the back of that pamphlet, it's like a starter kit, it's just, you know, how to do it.
So this would be, this would be for, for any type of injury that the person's.
It's mainly a bleed, you know, you know, an active bleed.
Yeah, all the officers carry a kit with them.
Do they?
They all have tourniquet kits with them, we've been training for years.
We train, I mean, that's part of the training we get, our annual in-service is also a part of first responder and tourniquets and Stop the Bleed, so this is more like a kit that Sergeant McLaughlin could turn around and train the town hall employees, he'd train, you know, have a night or a day, or to train anybody that was interested, or some of the citizens of East Bridgewater. This particular kit, like Charlie said, it's $1,025 plus shipping on the back, and it's the initial instructor's kit, so he could train other, you know, town departments, et cetera.
Yeah, great.
We're all, all our officers are trained in this already, so this is just more to offer to the, if you go out there, stopthebleed.org.
If there's an event, an officer's not going to stop and render aid to anybody, they're going to go after the threat.
And this might be a first responder, you know, and God forbid there ever was an active shooter or some type of situation where there was a lot of bleeding going on, but this is to train bystanders who can help stop the bleed prior to, you know, a professional getting there, whether it's a car accident on Route 18 or anything, I mean, you know, they teach you different ways to how to stop.
Well, that's what I was going to say, you know, even at like an aftercare program, if a child, you know, gets caught in a fence, or, you know, rips their arm open, I mean, to have some training in this type of service would be great.
And just, I mean, just the opening line, Stop the Bleed is a grassroots national awareness campaign and call to action, Stop the Bleed encourages bystanders to become trained, equipped, and empowered to help in bleeding emergency before a professional help arrives, I mean, that's pretty much what the program is.
Did you see this?
This actually was started by the White House in 2015, in the Department of Defense, that actually oversees it.
Do you see this as opening up to the public at some point in time to run sessions for the public to?
It definitely is, right now there already is, you can go out there and stop, you could find locations, I know social hospital offers it free, that, you know, they offer it, it's, some of the classes are a couple hours, and you, there's plenty of training already out there, this would just give the opportunity for us to bring the, you know, our, you know, Sergeant McLaughlin instructed the training to the town, you know, if you ever wanted to offer that, or, you know, within the town hall employees, and like I said, some of the outside institutions and the businesses and citizens of East Bridgewater, if they wanted to.
Absolutely.
We could build upon it, but there is the free training already out there, if you go out there, I know, like I said, that the link, stopthebleed.org, if you go out, I think social hospital offers the free training, there's a lot of different areas, I'm sure Brockton, but we actually sent a few of the guys to the social hospital one, just to go to that training.
Great.
So what that resulted in is, having talked to Rebecca, there may be money is available in the town, in the Selectmen's budget, various categories, but it would use up a significant portion of that, and I didn't want to move ahead and simply, you know, use up two-thirds or a half of an account with this without talking with you all, you know, and obviously, if we get to May or we get to June, and we do need more money in the account, either we'll do some line item transfers that need to be approved by you and the Finance Committee, or we'll go to the Finance Committee and say, hey, you know, you all, you know, we brought this to you, you wanted us to wait, you know, come back later, here it is.
I can buy it with the grid, imagine, Mike.
Nice, look at that.
Yay.
Wow, wow.
Win-win.
That's exactly what it's designed for, so.
We'll change the motion to authorize the fire department to fund this with their emergency management money.
Second.
Wish you may take a second, any further discussion?
I think it's a good idea, and I think people, I think there's like this initial reaction, like, oh, you know, blood, but people need to reframe that and think, just like they would step in with CPR, but this is just an extension of that.
Just like that Narcan, anything else.
And if you're willing to be trained in CPR, then, you know, be willing to be.
Exactly, just like even with the Narcan, everyone's trained on, I mean, you could have a terrible accident at home where, you know, you cut yourself, and this just gives you a quick action, you know, using the chainsaw in the yard, anything like that, it's It's just, you know.
Your husband could get hit by a car.
Anything. Hit, mow on your lawn.
You never know.
We're getting a little morbid here. Yes, I think it's.
It's been made in second.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. We hold off on the rest and?
Yep, we're six.
Yeah, let's get to six.
The public hearing.
So, Chairman, public hearing scheduled for six o'clock. The East Bridgewater Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 28th, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the East Bridgewater Town Hall, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass., on the town's proposed regulations in connection with the town's stormwater bylaw. Copies of the regulations are available in the Board of Selectmen's office, are on the town's website, eastbridgewaterma.gov. The public is invited to attend and participate in the public hearing.
Thank you.
And Scott is here.
Yep.
To present or answer any questions?
Yeah, why don't you, you want to just give us the overview? I know you were here a while back, but why don't you, for the people that are here, kind of how we got here?
Sure. My name's Scott Turner, I'm with Environmental Partners. We've been working with the town for, I don't know, I guess, probably eighteen months on a number of different items, including the development of, revising the stormwater management bylaw, and the development of the regulations. I was here probably six weeks ago, I guess, to talk about the reason for the regulations as they pertain to the MS4 permit. Earlier this year, the stormwater bylaw was passed, consistent with the requirements of the permit, with the MS4 permit, and per those bylaws, the authority has their purview to develop regulations and pass them and enforce them. So, working with the different town boards, we have developed regulations. They've actually been derived from other communities that have also derived these regulations, or have actually passed these regulations and have them in effect, with some changes that are, that make sense for East Bridgewater. And, you know, just here to answer any questions regarding the regulations. Feel any questions that anybody may have?
Yep. So, the board members first, do you have any, I know we went through this, I've signed in many meetings that we have with the track regarding the stormwater and some of the, some of the regulations that have changed. But, Janelle, you have some questions, or?
I just wanted to ask what you're saying, you know, how did you get, how did we get here?
Okay.
And what's changed from the bylaws that had been on the books to today? What's different?
So, more specifically, I guess, from, so I can tell you from my point of view is, we were all over the map, as far as I was concerned, where those, where these, where the process was, you know, whether it was with conservation, or whether it was with the planning board. We had some things that also went through the building department as far as the process itself. So, what we were trying to do, and I'm going to have John speak a little bit more on the actual way we got to where we are right now. But my concern, and I think the boards, you know, I'll let Carolyn David speak, as well as the questions we had more often than not, was, you know, what is the process and how you get from point A to point B in, in that process? It jumped all over the place for a long period of time. So, from what I was trying to do, or what we were trying to do, was to simplify that process, make it more straightforward. But, again, I don't go to all the track meetings, you know, we started this process, I don't know, about a year ago, John, I guess, with the track meetings, maybe a little further than that.
Yeah, I hate to sit back and shoulder, back to everybody else. So, you have to, particularly with stormwater and the MS4 permit, that the town is required to meet the regulations of the Environmental Protection Agency, which mandates the protection of essentially all of the US clean drinking water, rivers, streams. That's, that's really what the intent of the overarching permit is. Then what, there's six portions of the permit that the town must comply with. Every town, actually, in the state, every town in the country, with a population of, it's more than ten thousand people now, right?
It's urbanized areas.
Urbanized areas, example, and there's six components of that. A number of best management practices that the town actually has to comply with, with the procedures and things that we do through our operations and public works and such. But also, the biggest component of it is development, and how tracks of land are developed, and the impacts they have on our public drinking water, our public wa, waterways, not just that drinking water. And from that, that all trickles down. And so, I believe it's section five of the permit is pre-imposed construction oversight, to make sure that proper erosion controls and things are in place, and that also, that once a project has been constructed, that all the requirements of the project are seen through to the end. And what we recognized here in town, and Scott, jump in, he's absolutely the expert, I'm just kind of, you know, going with it. But what we recognized here in town was there wasn't a clear, efficient process for project review, project inspection, and then project closeout. Not, not for a particular reason, but more so because it was being reviewed in, it wasn't a process in which it was streamlined through one particular department or whatnot. And therefore, it ended up with applicants sort of being directed in numerous different directions throughout the process at different times. And the real intent of this, and the intent of moving forward with hiring a comprehensive environmental engineering company to work with the town at all levels, is to have that consistency throughout. So, now when projects are submitted, and before approval, and before, throughout, the same firm is reviewing them for all the same, at all the same levels. And the hope is that we actually can provide some transparency and some efficiency in the process and move forward. But the stormwater permit is, and these regulations that have been developed are going, are, are a huge part of our construction process, and are going to continue to only become a bigger portion of the, the operations and maintenance that must go on in order to comply with the actual overarching MS4 permit. An ideal to?
Yeah. Yes, so in the, in the early, or mid-nineties, the state propagated stormwater management standards that have become pretty much like standard engineering practice in Massachusetts since, I think it was 1996, when they were, when they were brought into, when they were passed. The MS4 permit is an EPA permit, and the, the MS4 permit has requirements that are over and above what is specified in the state's stormwater management standards. They pertain mostly to, as John said, there are six different areas. Some of them are just, you know, public participation and public engagement. Some of them are removing illicit discharges from stormwater management, stormwater management systems. What this permit is really about, though, is about design requirements as they pertain to new projects, erosion, sedimentation control, and operations and maintenance. And so, this regulation has been developed to address those areas that are, that are required in the MS4 permit, that are over and above what's in the state's, the state's stormwater management standards. And I'll give you an example. They have requirements to remove phosphorus and nitrogen, which are new. They have enhanced requirements for infiltration. There's a formula now under the state standards. Now, if you're a new development, you need to infiltrate the first inch of water, or retain it on site. If it's a redevelopment, the first pointy inches of water that falls from the sky. There are, let's see, there are requirements regarding enhanced erosion-sementation controls, which, quite frankly, are really what you're supposed to do anyways, under the state, under the, under the EPA's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Construction General Permit. There are requirements for as-built plans. EPA is trying to encourage folks to do more nature-based drainage solutions, what they call low-impact development standards, which are, you know, swales and fire retention basins, those types of things. There's requirements for as-built plans. The town has taken, this regulation takes those requirements and incorporates them, takes the MS4 requirements, incorporates them into the regulations, and then does a couple other things that are, I guess, different. So, for instance, one of the things in town that's been going on, and John can speak to this, is that there've been a lot of projects that don't necessarily qualify under the state's standards because they're too small. So, under the state's standards now, if you have a project that is under four lots, if you have, if you have a three-lot subdivision, state standards do not apply. This requirement, and this is something that's required under the MS4 permit, is if you disturb an acre of land, you're required to get a permit. So, that's a, that's a, that's a MS4 permit requirement. What this town regulations have required is that if you're clearing over ten thousand acre, I'm sorry, over ten thousand square feet, which is a quarter of an acre, a little less than a quarter of an acre, you have to apply for a permit. It's also divided into two separate types of permits. So, there's a general permit, and there's an administrative permit. A general permit has much more stringent requirements, has to, you know, you have to fulfill, you have to put together a full stormwater management report, similar to what the standards are now, just to meet the increase of the enhanced design requirements. The administrative permit does not have as many requirements. So, if you had a one-acre lot, or if you had a single-family home, and you wanted to build a single-family home, you don't have to meet all the same requirements that a general or a larger project would meet. But you do have to show that you're managing stormwater. It also has requirements in there for operations and maintenance, because what a lot of folks and a lot of developers do is they put in, they design a project to meet the state's standards, and then they don't manage it. So, if you don't manage it, then it doesn't work. And what's, what, you know, EPA and the state increasingly is, is recognizing is that we're starting to see a lot more significant water quality problems. If you drive by a lot of ponds or lakes in the summertime, especially in August or September, you see them, they're green, they're filled with algae, and that's because of nitrogen and phosphorus. And that's why there's a requirement now to remove nitrogen and phosphorus. That's why there's an increased requirement for infiltration of stormwater, because that's the most effective way to remove nitrogen and phosphorus from stormwater. So, I mean, in a nutshell, that is really what's there. It designates, it designates John, or DPW, the DPW director, as the author, as the agent acting on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. That, and I mean?
You still have to address if it's a concern from, whether it be the planning board or conservation.
That's right.
They're still, they still have to address their, their concerns and their issues. So, we're not, sorry, ceding anybody as far as the departments go. But, you know, furthermore than that, this is, this has been a discussion that's been going on now for, at least getting these regulations straightened out for at least a year, and been looked at, and been okayed by, by every, every department that has, has a say in this. So, it wasn't something that, whether it's John or Scott, had designed themselves, but, you know, the group as, as a whole. So, it's what, every two weeks that the track meeting?
Yeah, and the intent of the rules and regulations, although it, per the Environmental Protection Agency, we have to comply with this. This is an option, it's not something that towns arbitrarily decide to do. But I think what we've really tried to do is work on these regulations and make sure they aren't, I think the correct term for this, but we don't want them to become just another layer of bureaucracy in the cog that slows things down. We want to be able to have that efficiency. That's why actually, working with Scott, he's seen that in some, if we're, if, it works a little, operates a little more efficiently when it's through public works, rather than through a board or a commission that meets a little less regularly. Public works is a, you know, it's 24/7 operation, but, you know, we have normal business hours, seven, eight AM to 4:00 PM, where applicants and engineers can meet. Inspections and such can be coordinated a lot more quickly, hopefully. And again, the hope is that the administrative permit can be utilized and turned around relatively, you know, quickly. You know, so it's not a situation where you're waiting and you make a submittal, and then you have to wait 21 days for a hearing or something like that. These are all things that can actually be done with some efficiencies in mind to, to move projects along and still end up with a quality project at the end. Because our biggest concern at the end of this is that the homeowner who purchases that piece of property is purchasing, has purchased what was originally approved and designed. And what we've found in a lot of cases is, that's really the person who gets stuck with the issue at the end, is the resident, not the builder who built the house three or four years ago, and may have done it during a period when a particular situation didn't exist, and come to find out, well, it's because there wasn't, you know, the process wasn't followed entirely as it should be all the way through. And, and usually that ends up, that's a DPW issue, you know, for one reason or another. So, it makes sense that, you know, we equally be involved at the beginning as well as, you know, the end, and hopefully prevent that issue for the resident in the process. That's my, that's my reason for, you know, interest and willingness to take this additional service on.
I have a question. So, this is the first time I've attended this meeting, I made the last one, when these were, things were being voted on. And is this, this is the wetlands, are you referring to the same thing? Or no, that's a separate topic?
No.
It just sounds so similar.
That, it, stormwater, wetlands, they, they are similar. But.
And it's also?
Per, again, this is an overarching permit through this MS4 municipal stormwater separation requirement that, it all has the same intent at the end. Keep our waterways and our natural areas clean and not silted and full of erosion and such. But this is a, this is standalone, separate from what the Conservation Commission is trying to do with their wetland bylaw.
Does this give, like, full control to the board for all the wetlands and conservation?
No, this is entirely separate.
That's what I feel.
Because when I read through it, it seems like it has a lot of similarities as the last meeting. Like, in the same, I don't know, it just has a lot of similarities.
There are similarities. Again, because the intent at the end is the same. Still the intent at the end of all of these things is that, you know, we protect our natural resources and our environment to the extent that we can, while, you know, still moving forward with growth and development for the town. But at the end, that our, what is it, Scott, the waterways of the United States, is that?
Yeah, it's all about, it's all about protecting, providing clean water. That's, that's really the intent of the, of the permit. So, you're right, the wetlands bylaw, and I was involved with that, and I don't know a whole lot about it, but I think I read it once. And it's about protecting wetlands, and this is about protecting water quality that discharges to wetlands. So, they are similar.
It's kind of like Mother Nature, isn't it? The rain and everything that we've always had. I mean, why is it so different now?
Because.
We're going to have too many buildings in a small area. There's got to be a reason.
Yeah, so, the more that you develop, the more development that there is, what happens is, you know, if, in the woods, let's say, if rain falls in the woods, you have a certain amount of water that falls on the ground. Some of it runs off, but most of it runs into the ground. Okay? There's not a whole lot of, because of all the vegetation that's there, there's not a lot of runoff of erosion, of sedimentation, of any of that type of stuff. With development in impervious surface, like roads and parking lots and rooftops, what ends up happening is that water runs off faster. It changes the way stormwater behaves once it hits the ground. And what it does is it carries off sediments and pollutants that ultimately get discharged into rivers and streams. And so, the intent is to collect that water, put it back in the ground like it was, like it would under natural conditions, but also clean it, so that by the time it gets to the wetlands, it's cleaner. And so, you know, those, those algae blooms that I described before would happen less and less frequently.
Aren't there certain fish and stuff that eat all that algae and everything?
No, not really. I mean, they kill fish. The, the, the blue-green algae, it kind of strangles it, it's strange, it takes all the oxygen out of the pond, and it, it's really bad for, for fish and for organisms that live in the water.
I think we can all kind of look, if we're looking for an example, in East Bridgewater, of where it develops. of where development sort of ends the positive situation, is we can look at Forge Pond, and we can look at the sedimentation that's occurred in Forge Pond over the last 50 years.
Hundred, 200, yes.
And the amount, and it no longer, you know, the basin instead of being 12 to 14 feet deep is, you know, a foot and a half to three feet deep in areas. And that's all direct sediment that's washed in downstream into that area. So, there, it's again, there are all things, it's to protect, the end result is the same as what, you know, Conservation may be trying to do, this Rules and Regulations try to do. I think, you know, with these rules and regs, we've tried to still...
Speed everything along, so it happens real fast and nobody notices.
No, I don't, speed what?
I don't know, whatever you're doing.
I mean, this has been a, 15 years, this has been, we've been, the town's been working towards compliance with the permit, so, since 2001.
Right, yeah, I mean, this board's idea is to try to help protect the citizens of the town of East Bridgewater. If you don't agree with that, I don't know what to tell you.
How are you protecting them?
Well, we just talked about it, right? So, you know, this, this, the stormwater that hits, we want to make sure that whatever water is...
We've always had it, though. I'm, I'm not getting it.
Well, it's a, it's a state, so, the state of Massachusetts has certain laws...
It's in conjunction with building apartments and all the other things up on Route 18, right?
No, this is not...
No, I mean, I think everyone can recognize that development is becoming more and more challenging, that the areas for developing, the land that's available...
Because everybody's building on conservation land, is why.
And that's what some of these rules and regulations are trying to work within to help...
Speed them up.
Prevent the erosion and sedimentation that that construction puts into the wetlands. These are all things that are trying to prevent that happening.
Well, maybe if we didn't overbuild the town...
We can't prevent the building if it implies.
We're a town, maybe if we didn't overbuild the town, we don't have to go through this. Because we shouldn't overbuild the town.
Well, we're a little beyond that, at this point, right? We can't tell the owners of those properties what they can and cannot do, but we can have rules and regulations...
Make things go faster, so nobody knows.
Either I'm gonna finish or you're gonna finish. Can I speak first, and then you can certainly add whatever you need to add, right? So, our objective here is to work with those owners, right? Because we can all agree that if you own a piece of property, you have the right to do whatever type of development that's in the town and state laws to do that. What we're doing is we're trying to make sure that these developments are done correctly and through the process that they need to go through, and done in a way that is in accordance of the law, really. And that's...
Well, I have some conservation land next to me that sold in Shuntav, and now it's getting piled up with leaves and everything. So, I want to know, why can that happen?
That would probably be brought up with Conservation. They meet, what, every two weeks, and I'm not sure what their meeting schedule is, but you can certainly talk, talk to them. That's where that probably belongs, to get the answers directly from that, that board, no doubt. Is there any other questions regarding the bylaw?
I did, and I, I totally understand, you know, you're trying to do the right thing for the residents, I just didn't understand it. I was one of the ones that asked that it be delayed, and if it doesn't, it wouldn't be approved tonight, right? Would it be...
Well, this is a public hearing, did you have specific questions about...
I thought this was a draft.
No, this is separate from...
Yeah, you're talking about the separate issue, you're talking about the town meeting?
You're talking about the other, the town meeting article that was delayed, right? Yes. That's not for, this is different.
Right, but it's being discussed.
No.
The wetland bylaws, no.
So, we had the wetlands bylaw at the town meeting a few weeks ago.
Yes.
That wasn't approved.
Correct, right?
Stormwater bylaw was approved back in May.
Okay.
These are regulations to implement the bylaw that was approved in May for stormwater, not for wetlands.
I don't know that the Conservation Commission scheduled those...
Yeah, they haven't yet.
To discuss them.
Not to my knowledge, they haven't posted a public hearing for the, for the wetlands.
So, we can, but I just had a question, because I did read through, so with regard to that, because I do have, like, a man-made retention pond near me now, it wasn't there when I bought the home. And I don't know if that applies, and I don't know if it restricts me, I was, like, reading through this, and some of it's saying I can't cut down a tree in my yard, possibly? I mean, I don't have a large parcel of land, but I just don't understand, and I need clarity. But under, I also had a question under applications and fees. So, for example, if I were trying to do something on my property and I approached the commission to, for a permit to do that, one of the things in this says that I, I would need to pay the fee, of course, and I understand you need fees, and, but it also says the commission then could say, now we need to hire consultants to, but I would have to pay for that. Consultant fees are very, very expensive, because the town does produce revenue through fees. Is that something that can be, and I don't have plans to develop, you know, in the back part of my property on this retention pond, I don't even know if it applies, because it's a retention pond, it's not natural, it's man-made, but I think it would.
Wetlands.
I mean, that, that's an entirely separate, though, from...
Stormwater?
Again, I, I think what you're discussing is the wetlands bylaw is being proposed.
Wetlands, yes. And I thought that's what she was, and I thought that's what you were asking.
No, that's not what is being proposed tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can ask that question later then.
So, tonight has nothing to do with wetlands?
Not with the wetlands bylaw, that was proposed at the town meeting, no.
Yeah, town meeting, yeah.
But it has different wet lawn, wetlands laws in it, right?
These are stormwater regulations, and stormwater can occur in wetlands, but it also can occur in uplands. So, for instance, if you develop a parcel that doesn't even have any wetlands at all, the stormwater regulations and the stormwater bylaw will still apply, because rain will fall from the sky, it needs to go someplace. And what we don't want is simply dumped into the rivers and streams with pollutants and sedimentation and such, as John mentioned with Forge Pond. So, wetlands are a different aspect of the whole, but what we're talking tonight about is stormwater, not wetlands.
Stormwater can essentially, for clarity, just think of it as heavy rainfall. So, when you have heavy rainfall that washes down, whatever washes off your driveway, washes off the street, washes off a property under development that has been cleared and has been graded and stripped, but doesn't have any lawn or anything, and if that rainfall comes down at, you know, an inch per hour or whatnot, and washes down the edge of the road and goes into a catch basin, and then that eventually goes into a river or stream. So, what we're trying to do is put procedures and regulations in place that prevent that from happening with this discussion, separate than the wetland bylaw.
So, that's Article 26. So, when is that going to be discussed, then, further ado?
We haven't heard from Conservation Commission, they'll have a public hearing and make an announcement to us and certainly get the information, like we said, at town meeting, when that public hearing will be, and they'll have further discussions regarding that bylaw.
I understand, okay, thank you.
Pertaining to the stormwater regulations that we're talking about tonight, one aspect that you mentioned, which I was not aware of, is that you're going to reduce the size. So, if it were less than, or for a less lots, it didn't apply, but now it's going to be, if it's more than 10,000 square feet, it will apply. Where did that come from? What precipitated that change, or that guideline?
Okay, so, the, the requirement to issue a permit for all projects over an acre came from the EPA, from the MS four permit. That is a requirement under the MS four permit. And that is what a general permit will be issued for under these regulations. The requirement that you have to file an administrative permit, and again, the requirements are not nearly as arduous, but you have to file for administrative permit over 10,000 square feet, came, came from discussions with the other town boards, and the reason for it is because there have been a lot of, my understanding, and John can probably elaborate on this better, is that there have been a lot of single-family lots that have been developed, if you form a 10 lots and you do them individually, you don't have to meet the standards, and that's what a lot of folks are doing. So, the impacts of one lot are not as great, but if you have 10 of them, then you can create issues. And so, that's why administrative permit was put in place or proposed in the regulations was to address that. And it's really just show your grading to see, as you're applying for a building permit, to see what, how you're controlling stormwater, rather than having it run off into the street, because that's what's happening now. And, and John, you can talk to more of the problems you're having.
Well, the other thing, I think that, and part of the reason we're here tonight, is this is not a new bylaw. The stormwater bylaw has been in place since, I think, 2017, and it was, yeah, and previous to that, it did not, and it was developed jointly with the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. And what came to light through track meetings and having environmental partners on board in discussions was that the bylaw was not in compliance with...
Regulations.
The regulations, and they were not being, they were not being administered consistently across all projects. And the intent here is that now the same rules and regulations will apply to all projects, and that's the process, that's how it will work through. So, there will be consistency for applicants, and the applicants will know, here are the rules and regulations, this is what you need to comply with. And then, you know, for the designers and such that design these projects, they will know upfront. So, I don't believe that the requirement, what Scott's referring to, that the full, full lots and under didn't previously exist, I don't know that it was previously being enforced.
Well, I'm comparing it to the state's standards.
Okay.
That's sort of, I'm comparing that requirement to the state's standards. The requirement to regulate land clearing over an acre, that is a state, that is a, that is an EPA requirement, they're requiring cities and towns that fall under the jurisdiction of the MS four permit to include that in their regulations.
The 10,000 square feet and under?
Yep.
Existed previous to, these are revised rules and regulations that have been proposed.
And to be honest with you, these regulations are a lot less stringent than the previous ones, than the ones that were contemplated before.
Well, not if they weren't false.
Well, that's true.
So, one board or commission, if you brought a project to one place, may have followed differently than another board or commission, and the intent with the revised bylaw at town meeting and promulgating these rules and regulations, that there will be consistency throughout for all applicants and all the projects we'll get.
And I think from the town perspective, consistency is great. Having a procedure to follow is great. As a resident landowner, being able to put two documents side by side and say, what's different, would be crucial to gaining the support that's needed for this. I haven't seen that yet. You mentioned the meetings that you've been having every couple of weeks and the discussions that go around in there. I think, again, as a resident, as a landowner, understanding what the concerns are would be extraordinarily helpful. But we don't go to all of your meetings. We don't know if there's something that is important that we should be concerned about, but we don't know what's up there.
I would only count for, we are putting forward what is important. This is the result of numerous projects being brought forward, concerns with those projects being addressed, and we can have meetings after meetings after meetings, but eventually we have to have it deliverable, and I feel like, you know, we had a bylaw that was put in place last May, we've got several projects come forward that essentially are in limbo right now because, well, the bylaw's in place, but there's no rules and regulations promulgated. So, for now, almost nine months, we've still been working with what I think is a less-than-efficient process for the applicants and for the town, and until we move forward with adopting some, some sort of rules and regulations that, again, Scott's point, are essentially the same rules and regulations that already existed with some revisions that actually, we feel are clearer and more consistent and perhaps a little less, I'm not sure the correct word for this, but are actually in the best interest of the town moving forward now.
And I will tell you this, because I do work in a lot of other towns, mostly working for developers, and these regulations are a lot less stringent than what you see in a lot of other towns, for sure. I know it's different for East Bridgewater, but it's, it's, they're a lot less stringent than a lot of other areas. In other towns, every town is supposed to be doing, is supposed to be putting these regulations, these bylaws and regulations into place. Some are, some are doing it in a much more stringent way, others aren't. If, if the town does not comply with the requirement of the MS four permit, subject to audit, subject to fines, subject to consent decrees, I've sat in audits with other towns that have been audited and haven't had their regulations in place, so...
Yeah, no, I mean, we've tried to in the last two and a half years, and it might seem fast, especially in the municipal world, to move these projects forward that we, you know, we expected we'd be. Some of the things that we found were, we were having trouble with were a lot of the building and planning items that either laid on tables or were delayed because of the process. So, for the, for us, to work with our boards and our employees, really, at the end of the day, was to find a way that would be more efficient, without, you know, without making it more constraining on the applicants. You know, we certainly have the applicants in mind, and again, we, you know, we do have meetings, and we do talk about these issues, they all take, every meeting, is this East Bridgewater...
The, the track meetings are working.
Not the track, but I mean, we've talked about, you know, this at town meeting, and we've talked about it on two occasions here at the Selectmen's meeting. But, you know, I think the bottom line is, like, even bringing in environmental partners like we did a couple of years ago, we had issues with, you know, having different, the different engineering firms working for different departments, and even them trying to come up with a solution to what the applicant was looking for would delay that in a lot of ways. And, you know, to me, this, you know, the, the best thing about this stormwater permit that we're trying to get through is the fact that, you know, we've now got a department that will be communicating with the applicant instead of a board. I mean, there'll still be communications with the board, whether it be Conservation or planning, whatnot, but, you know, for the day-to-day operation of what's going on, you have a, now you have a person that's, that's there, you know.
So, I think it's important, too, that for most applicants, the process won't change significantly, because the bylaw still requires that any project that is a subdivision, that falls under subdivision rules and regs, site plan approval or special permit, is still going to be administered by the planning board. But the rules and regulations of the stormwater requirements are the same, it's just that the planning board will administer them. So, that, it won't require an additional hearing, it won't require additional meetings, it's, it will still go through the same process, it will just originate, and then at DPW, we'll determine whose jurisdiction of per se falls under, it goes there, and then, but again, the rules and regulations for the applicant, the designer, are going to be the same as they are.
Well, my point would be that at least they have someone to go to if there's a question prior to going to those...
In an appeal.
Those boards, right. I mean, you know, that, that's the problem, you wait for the board, and hopefully they have, you know, a quorum, right? And then from there, you know, you'll look for the answers, whereas, you know, if you have somebody that you're working with at a department like DPW, you have more answers than you needed to, or that you want to have prior to going into those, those meetings. More support, I guess is the way, the best put. I mean, anyone else, any other questions? Charlie, you have anything else you wanted to...
I don't, I mean, obviously, we need to have a set of regulations that go with the bylaw, in order to provide the residents and property owners what, you know, here's the path to follow, and here's what we need under certain situations, and here's what we need in other situations. I think that's very clear in this.
I agree. Scott, anything else you want to add, or...
I just wanted to, I guess, to your, your point about the smaller lots. The requirements for an administrative permit for over 10,000 square feet are an application form, $100 fee, plans which would already be produced, a draft operations and maintenance agreement as appropriate, and just a narrative describing how you're going to handle stormwater. That's really all that it is. It's not an arduous, it's not an arduous requirement. All right. John, do you have anything to add? You're good.
Chairman, I make a motion to close the panel camera.
Motion made second. On the favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I did, I thought closed that topic or the whole meeting concluded?
No, 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 that's just the stormwater.
Okay, all right. I had something else.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Do you want to vote on this then?
Yep.
Chairman, I make a motion that the board approve the regulations in connection with the town's stormwater bylaw as presented.
Second.
Motion made second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, also.
Thank you, John.
Long process.
If you want to move our action items.
Yep.
Chairman, I make a motion that we talk about a request for a regarding trash and recycling bill.
Second.
All right, motion made second.
May I talk with John and with Pam about this? The, it's not going to be perfect, and we don't know whether it's going to work or not, but simply to offer the resident the ability to do a payment plan similar to payment plans for other fees that the town collects. And, you know, to stay current in that payment plan so that the person doesn't have to put up a large sum of money all at once, they can pay it out over a certain number of months. But with the stipulation that if they don't meet those payments, the town will cease trash collection for that resident. I don't know whether the resident's going to be interested in accepting that, but I think at least it provides that person with an option as opposed to simply the town saying, sorry, you're cut off right now. If it doesn't work out, the town may be out a certain amount of money, but we'll just have to eat that.
All right. Appreciate looking into that.
So if the board would approve that because it falls under the board to?
Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion that we offer the residents a payment plan and to stay current with it.
Second.
Motion made second. Further discussion?
Only that in the event that they don't stay current, it's understood that service would cease.
Right. Now, the process would be, Charlie, they'd reach out to DPW or the treasure collector.
Treasure collector would set up a payment plan.
To talk about payment.
Just like, you know, we do, we do that, for instance, for water bills on occasion.
So anyone that's having some difficulties with their bill?
Well, in this particular, we're going to limit it right now to this discussion to this one resident. You don't have a whole slew of residents.
Yeah, we're not opening the door, but, yeah.
What do, really for our, what's current? How many days is it going to be current?
Well, I think we're, we're talking, I think, a payment per month. So that, you know, well, I believe they have an outstanding payment right now. There's a new, the, it's every six months normally, and we would say to that person, take the outstanding payment, take the payment that's coming up, divide it during, let's say, the last seven months of the year, from December until June. And if you stay current, great. If you don't, the collection would cease, and you'll have to make other provisions for trash collection.
I'm sure that's added to the motion.
Did you amend to include all that?
Yeah.
What he said.
Second.
All right, motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make the discussion vote on a town representative for school committee contract negotiations per Massachusetts General Law Chapter 150, Section 1.
Second.
So under the Massachusetts laws, the board can choose a representative that can attend school committee meetings in executive session when the discussion contract negotiation and have a vote on those matters. So whether it's contracts with the union, contracts with individuals. I know that, I believe Carol is the liaison, but I don't know that the board actually officially had designated her and whether she wants to do that. We would tell a school, this is a person who's designated. Please inform that person when you have school committee meetings that you'll be going, unfortunately, by every meeting, the way things work. You'll be going to executive session for contract negotiations so that that person has, you know, knowledge to attend those meetings and can represent the board and, you know, the town in essence, interests when those negotiations occur. It doesn't mean that that person goes to the actual negotiation sessions where, for meeting with DPW, Teamsters or something like that, similar, we don't have the board there, that person would not be attending the negotiations. They would attend the executive sessions of the school committee when they're discussing those negotiations.
That's the first I've ever, I mean, we've had a liaison. Do you ever remember anybody talking about that?
No, no, we've always had a liaison to the school.
But never been included in any executive session meetings.
But it is a lot under Massachusetts law, so.
Yeah, I think we need to open the conversation, certainly with the schools in order to, I mean, we've got, you know, there's some frustration, I think, even from finance committee members that feel like that the process is, is done and then they're, you know, told about it afterwards. And, you know, it's our job as a board to, you know, protect them and work with them and make sure they're gathering the information and involved in the conversation, you know? And I look back to the fact that, you know, we've, we've certainly reached out to the schools. They've been involved in a lot of discussions that we've had. They've been involved in Charlie's job and the treasurer's job, but, you know, they should be because they're part of the town, they're part of this, you know, the discussions, and they're part of treasure collector and accountant and if they're work with them. I'm just not sure that, you know, we as a board or we as a town are getting the same back from them, you know? And that's partly our fault as well, not, you know, splitting blame on anyone. But I think to, you know, for you to reach out to them and let them know that, you know, the board strongly wants to be involved in, you know, Carol, and hope that you'd still, you know?
Yeah. Does it need to be the same person every time? Like, say, it was a thing where I wasn't available, like?
I can check. There may be, well, there may be a setup that can be an alternate.
Right.
I'll check.
Okay.
Yeah, because they've got.
So if you, if that's a possibility, you could also designate an alternate, whether it's Peter or David or whoever.
Right. I mean, it's a big portion of our budget, right?
Yes.
Very large. And, you know, there's not just, you know, not just contracts with, you know, with the superintendent or the teachers or, or, you know, just one party, but multiple parties, custodians, I believe, you know?
There are professionals, even the assistant principals have a separate contract.
Right, yeah. So just to have the ability for, from someone from our board to at least be acknowledged that, look, this is the fact that, you know, what we're discussing, and then, like you said, to your point, you know, you're able to make that or somebody from the board, then we can at least have, you know, a rational, upfront conversation with our thoughts about what they're doing, what the process is, or how they're going through the process. Because, you know, sometimes I just feel like we're.
Would have been good to know six months ago.
Yeah.
The communication, again, has to be open between the schools and everyone.
On both sides, yeah.
And again, back and forth, both ways.
Yep, yep. And I think that this is a good step in trying to solve that. Because, you know, the relationship has been a lot better. I think, you know, we all agree that, you know, we've, we've worked a lot better in the last three or four years and whatnot with the schools in trying to partner with them and not just, you know, have this town-school cloud over our heads. But, you know, it's, there's, there's concerns, and there are concerns from boards that I'm sure have reached out to both of you as they have to me, that, you know, they feel they're still not getting quite enough information, whether that's from the school committee or superintendent, whoever it may be, at least for us to open up the avenue with them that we can get involved a little bit further and help them. You know, also, it's good to have that support, right? I mean, if there is a situation, a contract that comes up and, you know, they're looking for the support from the town, it'd be better if we knew ahead of time what was going on prior to, you know, later on. I mean, you know, I guess a lot of the information we all learn is from the same, same source, you know, social media.
Yep.
And that's not fun. But, yeah, I think if you don't, I appreciate that, Charlie. If you, I think if you don't.
So the board could designate Carol your alternate, Peter?
Sure. Whatever, yeah.
Great. Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Make a motion that we appoint Carol Julius as the town representative to the school committee contract negotiations and Peter as the alternate.
Second.
All right. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Judge Jovan to the Finance Committee effective November 28th, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Is George here?
No, he did meet with the Finance Committee, I think it was November 8th.
Good.
And they had a little sort of small interview. Now we have a full finance.
Hooray. Thank you, George.
Yep, thank you, George. All right, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to review and vote on the request for Melody Seer of the East Bridgewater Christmas Parade Committee for the East Bridgewater Christmas Parade. The event will run December 3rd, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? How are we doing now? Did we figure out Santa?
The Christmas Parade Committee is providing their Santa.
Okay, all right. So we at least got some, some Santa.
Yes, there is a Santa.
There is a Santa Claus.
And Mr. Speaker will join us this time.
Yeah, I will be there, absolutely. Yes, I can. It's too cold to play golf now, so.
It was supposed to be 70.
Well, I'll call you.
I haven't looked at the weather. Does it look good?
I'll be there, looking forward to it.
Good enough.
All right, yeah.
We've done it in snow and.
We've done it in everything.
Right, great. Looking forward to it.
Is this like the 38th or something?
Is it that far?
Yeah.
Really?
Well, Christmas on the common night, I think the parade was a little bit later than.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye. That is it, Mr. Chairman, for action items.
Great. Did you have a, did you have a question or, I know you had something else that you? Come on up to the table.
Sure.
So.
Will you name one? I'm sorry.
Yes, my name is Barbara Brooks. I'm a resident of East Bridgewater. I had brought this up to Charlie at the meeting, and I know we heard a lot about.
The town meeting.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So I hear a lot about, you know, protecting the residents, so that's why I was concerned about this. This does not benefit me, but if there's any way that we can help the residents of East Bridgewater, I wanted to share that information. So this is in regards to utility bills, National Grid utility bills. So some people, I don't know if everybody can hear me, but if you're a resident or anybody that has National Grid, the rate went from 11 cents per kilowatt to, on November 1st of this year, to 33 percent, uh, 33 cents per kilowatt. So people, people that have a $100 bill are now going to get like a $300 bill. And that's not that easy for some people.
Mm-hmm.
And if they have a bigger bill, of course, it's going to be bigger. It, because the bills usually, I believe, run from the 15th to the 15th, like this month, they're not going to really notice it, but just before Christmas, people are going to get slammed with this. But there is a solution to help people. In fact, the city, I mean, the town has something, an aggregate in place already through.
That's the whole thing.
No, I know, but it, for your town buildings.
For the town buildings, yes.
Yeah. So it's not something we're not familiar with, the aggregate.
Well, just as we go to bid for gasoline, it's not considered an aggregate. We go out, we'll go out to bid for electricity for the town buildings. It's just another supply. The aggregation program is a, one that was run by the town, but can provide those services to residents and small businesses and such. And it's an entirely different thing than the town going out for its own buildings.
I've learned, since I talked to you actually about some other towns that do this, they have a townwide aggregate. So they negotiate with suppliers. So I, your electric bill has a supplier side and then a delivery side. We can't do anything about the delivery side. National Grid charges that price, and they own the poles and the wires, and there's nothing we can do.
Well, it's also regulated by the Department of Public Utilities, the rate for that is.
For the poles?
Deep, so for the transmission or delivery charges, you mentioned, because it's a monopoly, those rates have to be approved by the Department of Public Utilities.
In each town?
No, Department of Public Utilities, Massachusetts.
Ah, okay.
So, I mean.
It's still going up, though.
I don't doubt that it's going up, but it's a different thing, as you pointed out, than the supply rate, in that each individual has a right to choose whoever their electricity supplier is.
Correct, yeah.
And they, and if the town wanted to provide that option of an aggregate supplier, it could do so. But right now, people can go with the default with National Grid. They could even sign a contract with National Grid. They can sign a contract with any number of other companies that are supplying electricity.
So, so I found out, I found out because I was trying to help, like, my family, my friends and my neighbors, because I called, I do have a different supplier. I use Constellation. And I'm not here on behalf of Constellation because I know there's another one called Next Era. I'm sure there are others, too. But when I called and I tried to ask about an aggregation, you know, I can't do that as a resident. The town, somebody in the town has to, has to do that. You said Halifax had one.
Yes.
I know that Norton has one, and I believe Attleboro also has one. They pay 10 cents per kilowatt for their residents. They can, they just get that. But our residents here are going to be paying 33 cents.
If they don't have a supply contract of their own already, if they're doing the default, if they've never signed a supply contract.
Still a National Grid, the whole bill. I've seen this before, right? So there's the difference between, like you said, the portion of the supplier you can go out and choose which company you want to use, yeah? They had those, so, but I guess where I'm thinking.
But National Grid is going, they've gone up to, this is, that amount is crazy. It's never been that high, ever. And people are gonna, they're already paying a lot in gas, food is sky-high, you know, even your average people. This isn't just going to be affecting people that are already compromised or are low income. It's going to be affecting everybody. And it's, it's every month, and you can't get by, you know, you can't get by without it. When I say, well, who knows what their bills, everybody's electrical use is different, but and I know when we had our conversation, Charles, you had said it takes a while to get it into place. But is there a way, again, protecting the residents of the town, just at least letting them know or negotiating a townwide aggregate?
It takes about a year to go through that process. For one thing, the town itself has to accept the various state statutes at a town meeting. So we would need a town meeting to do that. We have to hire a consultant to put together the proposals, for instance, when, to go out to bid. The same consultant does the PR campaign. We have to mail information out to all the residents about the program and what their options are about, you know, they have to opt out if they want to be out of the program. They can choose various types of electricity supply, you know, if they want 100% renewable or 50% or none, no percent or whatever. It's not something, unfortunately, that we can do within a matter of a few weeks or a few months. The other problem is also the plan has to go to the Department of Public Utilities to get approved. And for whatever reason, I was talking with my fellow managers a couple of weeks ago, there is a whole stack sitting at DPW waiting to be approved. And in some cases, it's taking more than a year just for the approval, let alone anything else. So all this, it's a beneficial program if the town wants to do it, but it's not something that we're going to be able to provide the residents in the near future. And there's no way for them to join the town's contract that it has for its municipal buildings or anything like that. It's unfortunate.
Do we, we don't use Constellation, do we, already on the aggregate that we?
I'd have to go check.
So when you say it has to go out to bid, you would then?
Well, I'll separate it out. The town's own contract for electricity for this building, the schools, et cetera, we go out to bid, whether it's once a year or every three years, just, you know, for a supplier to supply electricity. The aggregate program does something similar, but it's a separate program from the town going out to bid for its own buildings.
Yeah, right. I think I am, yeah.
The private resident is what you're saying, or private business.
So we go out to bid, we're, we're going to say, who's our supplier for town hall? We, we're gonna say, who's our supplier for Town Hall? The D P W, the water, the library, et cetera. We would, under the aggregate program, we would work with a consultant, go out to bid to be a supply, get a supplier to supply electricity for residents and small businesses. Then they would have the choice of opting out of the program if they wanted to.
Is this a state, this aggregate program? Is it through the state of Massachusetts?
Well, it's under the state laws, yes. So we have to follow those state laws.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I believe, you know, when I talked to Brian about this, you know, even six months ago, I know that there were some discussions, because Halifax has been doing it probably now for half a dozen years or so.
They have a good amount of people, residents that are involved in it?
Yeah. In fact, O C P C worked with towns in the O C P C district to, it was probably at least a half dozen they worked with at the same time. Wasn't a regional bid, per se, but they worked, so, um, for whatever reason, East Bridgewater didn't join up. And Brian said he thought it was more political. I don't mean with the board's selectmen at the time.
Right, right.
But there's always a pushback from residents, because what they see is the town saying to them, you shall have this supplier, we chose it for you, you did not have any choice. They do have a choice. They can opt out.
Yeah.
And residents, and the residents who react that way really are saying, if I wanted to be in this, I would opt in, but you're telling me I gotta opt out. I actually have to do something not to participate, even if it's a phone call, even if it's going to a website and saying, I'm not going to opt in, you know, I'm gonna opt out. There are a number of people, this is, you know, southeastern Massachusetts can be fairly conservative at times, and they don't want government involved in their lives. So they say, I don't wanna even have this program in the town, even though it might be beneficial to my neighbor, I don't wanna have to be forced to opt out.
Right.
So Brian indicated it was likely, at that time, the consensus was, it was not worth it for the town.
So everybody's in unless you.
Opt out, or.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, they can, as you were saying, they could say, I, I want the freedom to choose this on my own, but as a town, if we help the residents by doing an aggregation townwide, you do get a better rate, because you're negotiating.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean.
So, yeah, I think if people, if that were explained to people, they can.
Well, we, we did that in Halifax. And mind you, it passed and we got it done and it's been working fine, but there was pushback from residents who said, I will not vote for this program, because you are telling me, I don't care that I will save money. I will never, ever participate in this program. And you cannot tell me what to do.
But back then, it might have been a five or seven cent difference. This is like a.
Could be larger.
Yeah.
So I've got.
The change in rates might change.
Right, might change.
Right, they might be like, thank you for doing this.
Well, I'm sure plenty people would. I mean, I'm not, if we, if the board directed me later tonight to say, Charlie, please investigate this more, everybody understands that if we move down this road and eventually, for instance, we'll have a vote at town meeting, there will be pushback from some residents who will say, I do not want the town to have this program, because I will have to actually call up and say, I don't wanna participate. And how dare they force me to do that? I'm not joking about it, because that was the reaction we had.
You could give away free ice cream.
Right, right.
You don't have the right flavor.
I'm more than happy to support, represent, you know.
So we have a very good relate, now that Charlie brought up O C P C, we have an extremely good relationship with the director from O C P C. So, I mean, I think, Charlie, you know.
And I've already reached out to Mary, because they must have the notes from five or six years ago.
Yeah, well, Mary Waldron, who's, you know, involved with this, you know, so, in the very least, let's let Charlie reach out to her and find out what it is, but, you know, yeah, again, I appreciate you bringing to our, you know, to our knowledge, yeah.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure people would be happy to know that there's some sort of relief. Even, I know that this may take a while, but, so, for example, I know Constellation does East Bridgewater. I think, I don't know if Next Era does, even if we can't make this happen, like Christmas.
Resident, they're, they're, well, on the state website, for, there's, they actually have a whole list of all the suppliers who you can sign contracts with for electricity, whether it's a one-year or a three-year or whatever. I mean, some of them offer rebates, some of them, you know, but you gotta be careful, just like you're buying health insurance.
Right.
In the sense of you, you wanna know, okay, if I leave this contract early, am I gonna be, am I gonna get nicked for some, you know, for some walkout clause? You gotta, you gotta read the fine print on any contract you're gonna sign with a supplier. You know, what happens when the contract ends? Does it automatically renew, for instance, unless I say otherwise? And if I, if it automatically renews, what's the rate gonna be?
Yeah.
So, but that's available to residents right now, today. They can go to.
I did have trouble myself navigating and finding this. It was a while ago, not recently. I, I've had this particular, I have a nine cent or kilowatt rate myself that I opted in like two and a half years ago, but I did know that it can be tricky and they can re, re-up you and, and charge you double, triple if you're not paying attention. This particular one has to notify you forty-five days in advance. But I'm sure they all, you know, this, I'm sure they're all different. But I think that even for residents that might be calling in, that might be struggling, just saying, because what's gonna happen? I used, I, my former work was in public health and, you know, working with people, you know, my electricity shut off. A, they're embarrassed, they don't wanna tell anybody and they think they're gonna be able to get it on, and then a month slips by and then they're running cords from a, you know, a tenant's apartment down to their apartment or vice versa. And then you've got dangerous things going on and children are suffering and, you know, it doesn't have to, they might not even approach you, you know, they might not even go to the town. Hopefully, smart people will reach out.
I was high, we were chatting about payment plans, you know, for water bills and things like that. I mean, people, you know, it doesn't mean that they're gonna, there are very, there are very, there may be various ways of spending less money on electricity through various energy efficiency programs. There may be rebates or lower costs for low-income customers. There can be payment plans so that you can spread the payments out equally over the course of a year, rather than have a spike in the winter. There, you know, there are a number of, I mean, none of them are a solution for everybody. And as you pointed out, the rates are going up one way or the other. It doesn't matter what you do. But there are programs that can help residents, you know, possibly lower their bills one way or the other, or at least spread out the payments or whatever.
Right. Great. Yeah, John, let's get somebody else's, probably the same subject. John, imagine.
Question, just for my honor and understanding. So you have an aggregate out there, say, the aggregate's the town of East Bridgewater Buildings or whatever. You get a three-year contract. Within that contract, there may be provisions for price raises over the three years.
No.
It may not be, but at the end of three years, certainly you're open to, or you go to another place to bid again, because, you know, it's gonna go on thirty-three cents. If you stay with the current provider for that aggregate, you wanna go somewhere else.
Right.
So it's really kind of, this is a reaction, I would say, to, you know, the fact that oil's becoming tough to get in, in order to make electricity.
Well, it's also more the natural gas prices and the oil prices, because more and more of the new electricity load comes from natural gas. And that's our, the real challenge in this area.
Right, so to reward it, oil slash natural gas has gone out, gone crazy, because we have to import it and everything now. You know, if that, if that doesn't stop, this is gonna continue anyway. And all you're going to get in a aggregate contract is savings for the period that they allow in the contract.
But, but also, I mean, I'll give you Halifax as an example, when we're talking where things were a little bit more stable than they are right now. Generally, what would happen is the summer rate, National Grid changes its rate every six months. Summer rates are always lower than winter rates. Why? Because people don't need natural gas to heat their homes in July, but they need it in December. So the nat, so the demand for natural gas goes up during the winter. So the, so the demand goes up, the supply's the same, well, the price goes up, whether it's used to heat a home, cook on a stove, or run a generator. So what would happen is, however, because you were doing this for a three-year period, you were doing it for a much larger base. The summer rate was usually equal, the aggregate rate for summer was either just a little bit above or equal to the National Grid supply rate in the summer. Then in the winter, it was always lower, like several pennies at least, between what National Grid was charging and what, you know, the aggregate was charging. But you're right, eventually, for instance, if these, if the rate environment stays where it is, that's gonna be reflected in whatever contract you sign. But nevertheless, there will still be incremental advantages about having a long-term contract, where you're one of a large number of electricity users.
I mean, my, my point would be that we're dealing with the symptom, not the problem.
Well, and there, sometimes all we, as the town of East Bridgewater can do is deal with the symptoms. I don't, we're not gonna build.
Natural gas towers.
It'd be like Middleborough and have our own electric supply.
Well, they still, they, they gotta still buy it from somebody else, unless they've got a generator sitting there in Middleborough, they're buying it from the same market everybody else's.
That was my next question. So you're saying they have their own municipal?
They have, they're, I, Charlie probably knows better than I do how it works, but they do have their own municipal power, like they, their, their electric bills come from the town.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Similar to, similar to having a water utility, except that, in this case, not every town that has its own electricity department generates its own electricity. It buys from the market the same way as everybody else does.
Right.
But the maintenance of the wires and everything in the town are dealt with through the town, not through National Grid or through other sources. And, you know, setting, how, Middleborough has it, Taunton has it, there's probably.
Braintree.
Three or four, yeah. There's probably about three or four dozen communities in Massachusetts that have it. Raleigh, it was up there back in the late eighties, up on the North Shore, they have a municipal light department. But that, that's a whole nother.
Yeah, so given the direction of power, energy, et cetera, is that something, I know that's a big question, but could it be looked at, that we become our own municipal? I know it can be done. I was talking to somebody that.
Yeah, I mean, well, again, it's a whole.
Right. Let's wait till the end of my term.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's.
But I mean.
Wait till the end of my term.
Come back and ask.
There would have to be, it's, I'll put it, it's a big gulp.
Hmm, yeah.
Even more, the aggregate is easy compared to creating an entirely new, I mean, let's say I said to John, John, guess what we're gonna do?
He's like, I'm out.
You know, you know the North Bedford Sewer District? We're only gonna worry about that, that small piece of Route eighteen. We're gonna do the entire town now. I'm sure John would be very enthused, but that's, that's the type, that's almost where we're talking, you know, talking in terms of size of trying to create a light department.
It improves the value, value of properties. If you talk to anybody in those towns that have their own municipal, they're like loving it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it, just the living is better.
Well, let us look at it through, through O C P C, seeing that they've been around this, this area and got some information for us to share. And then I'm sure Charlie's got your information. We can certainly get back to you on that.
Yeah, or I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Yep.
I have one last question. I don't know if this is a question for you folks, but I had, I brought up the rotary at Elmwood, the Elmwood stoplight on Route eighteen. I do see that there is some sort of a black monitor wire that's out there right now, and I was just wondering, are they looking into putting a rotary there?
No, it's a traffic study, right, John?
Traffic study for, again, Old Colony Planning is doing a traffic study of the Route eighteen corridor of the Bridgewater's.
Okay.
So those scripts are to do traffic counts. They can get, they can get turning movements, heavy vehicles, commuter times. So that's the data that they start to use to build their.
Are they gonna eventually do that area, though, over? Cause they have that sign up, the construction sign is like right near my house.
So that construction was, that construction sign was to do with the recent construction that was just completed on this section of Route eighteen.
Okay.
They put those construction signs up to warn you of the construction. That corridor is under the jurisdiction of MAST DOT, not the town of East Bridgewater. So any changes there have to go through the MAST DOT project development, not through the town of East Bridgewater. That intersection's been looked at probably a half a dozen times during my tenure in the town.
Because it's so bad.
Because it has some challenges.
I've had a car flipped over in front of my house, two doors down, the car flipped over. There was a death last October.
It's, it's, it's.
I can tell you what happens. I live there, so when people come out of that intersection, you can't have two lanes. It needs to be one lane, because they race. I did, just is the nature of it. That's why I suggested a rotary, because a rotary would bring them out in one, one at a time. And I think it's, I don't think the traffic is so heavy that they can't do one.
Again, that all falls under the jurisdiction of MAST DOT at the state level, not local. There is, there are about twenty-five thousand contrives a day on Route eighteen for that corridor. So, and it typically involves, you know, that, one of the issues is the, the intersection is built out to its, the property is built out to its limits. So we take, to install rotary, or even a roundabout, which is a smaller rotary, which is in some surrounding communities, those are typically on much lower volume roads. But you would have, having to negotiate with the property owners to take property and stuff like that. So it's, it's a, it's a long process. I know the state acknowledges the intersection and, you know, legislatures and things. We've asked them to assist us with looking at, you know, what could be done there.
So is that what the study's about, to try and figure out?
Not per se, just that individual intersection, the whole corridor.
Bridgewater to.
Route eighteen, from the Whitman Town Line down through all the, all the way to Middleborough, probably to the rotary in Middleborough, to look at the development along that corridor, traffic volumes, trends, things like that, and try to give a forecast for the future. I don't know if they're looking at entirely localized intersections, they're more looking at the corridor as a whole, but that's what the, that's what the study is at this point.
So you're saying I should reach out to, cause I thought Old Colony Planning Council would also be part of that, right?
They are, they're the ones who are doing the study.
Ah, okay.
As far as the rotary goes, I would say that, you know, we can give you some names for some state reps and some senators. You can keep a call all day long. It's not election anymore, so you probably won't hear back for this.
I did reach out before your suggestion. They said they were gonna look into it. But I, so, last question. One simple thing that could be done, that would be, could be done in a day, is just put a green arrow for that left-hand turn, that alone, oh.
That's not necessary.
If only we.
I, I joke, cause.
It's, it's a traffic light, it's already hanging there.
It's a traffic engineering process through MAST DOT. The town, the town literally has no.
We don't own the lights.
Already, we have no, we have no juice.
Nope.
With the Route eighteen corridor.
I mean, there's nothing preventing anybody, whether it's you or the towns, making that suggestion to MAST DOT. The regional department is over in Taunton on one forty, I think, I believe, right?
Yeah, we have, that has all been suggested and studied and recommendations made. But again, that now moves into the queue of all the intersections and miles of state road that MAST DOT is responsible for. And their funding schedules and things like that. Again, a lot of it is, does seem to have to do with your legislative powers, how those projects move.
I think the flipped cars is because the roads have been paved over so many times, there's about that much sidewalk left. So when people are racing to, they ride right up on the sidewalk, they hit trees and holes and.
No offense to MAST DOT, but you'll realize why exactly the project that they've just recently completed stopped where it did.
Say that again?
You'll, you'll, you'll notice exactly why the projects on Route eighteen, the reconstruction of Route eighteen within sidewalks, stopped exactly where it did.
Because.
Was directly to do with, it still has to be, they have not yet figured out how to deal with that.
Improve that section. So at least it's being looked at.
Yes.
They're, they're not ignorant. They're, they're not blind to the fact of the problem, the intersection. But the, as John pointed out, you're looking at a hundred, a thousand different projects. And, you know, John and I have been doing this type of work, not just here in East Bridgewater, but it takes forever. I mean, a decade sometimes, from someone walking in and saying, let's do X, Y, Z, to actually coming to fruition. Cause they've got to have engineering plans up the wazoo, then it has to get on a construction schedule and get funded.
I think that, well, the family that lives at that corner, with its children watch this man die in front of their front yard. That family, that the parents, you know, he, for decades, he has, and he has given up on sending, you know, he's written respectful letters, you know, explaining the problem. I mean, you're, I'm sure, very aware of all the calls you get to that intersection.
Exactly, for thirty-one years.
Yeah, right. So, you know, probably the worst part, worst intersection in town, or is there another?
That seems debatable.
Washington and Central.
Washington Central's pretty bad. Washington and Plymouth still isn't the greatest, even though we dumped money into that.
Highland and eighteen is no fun either.
What is it?
Highland Street, where.
It's only has one lady in directions.
Route eighteen, so that's.
Yep.
Right by, it's all the tire.
Is that, I didn't realize that was bad, too.
Yeah, we gotta get going, all right.
All right, all right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah.
I appreciate it.
We're at announcement.
I just brought her in, yeah. We were done announcements, so I guess it's, uh.
Well, we haven't talked about the winter.
The winter.
Winter parking.
We haven't done that yet.
We got a parking ban.
Yeah.
Parking ban.
Go parking.
Started.
Parking. A parking ban.
Go parking and a packing. Go parking into packing.
So just two announcements.
Yeah.
The winter parking ban began November fifteenth and will go through April fifteenth. Overnight parking on any public street or way is prohibited. Please do not park on obstruct or block sidewalks. This forces pedestrians to walk out into traffic and prevents our sidewalk tractors from plowing the sidewalks. Parking on sidewalks is always prohibited. Vehicles will be subject to tow in emergency situations. If you have any questions, call the police department at five zero eight three seven eight seven two two three. And for the twelfth year in a row, the fire department will be holding the Toys for Tots. They'll be participating in the program. Phil unfortunately couldn't come tonight, he's not feeling well, so he asked me to pass along a message. So they collect gifts for newborns to eighteen years of age and redistribute to East Bridgewater's residents. Monetary donations are also accepted so that we may purchase any gifts that are necessary to meet the need. Gift cards are great and checks can be made out to E, B, P, F, F, A, two seven six eight. Or you can call and find out if you don't get that. Boxes will go out this week to the community center, town hall, library, YMCA, and the lobby of the fire department, which is open twenty-four seven. If you have any questions or need help, assistance with the gifts, you can contact Lieutenant Wolf at the fire department, five zero eight three seven eight two zero seven one. And the next selectmen's meeting is December twelfth.
Thank you. Charlie?
Try and move this along as well as I can. Remember, we're dealing with the MBTA zoning ordinance that the Commonwealth had approved, saying that if you're an MBTA community, which we are even without the station, that you are required under state law to enact changes in your zoning map so that you end up, in East Bridgewater's case, fifty acres of upland that are by right allowed to have a density of at least fifteen housing units per acre. The downside is if you don't go ahead and do this, that there will be various state grant programs you will no longer be eligible for. It's a short list at this point, we'll see whatever happens. We fulfilled the first requirement back earlier this year, when we said, "We're interested, we'll move ahead." My friends next door never did so, and their housing authority got dinged, but surprisingly, it was a weird situation. Nobody had mentioned that was gonna happen. But it allowed us to stay eligible for the various grants that we got this year. The next deadline is next month, well, Jan, I think the middle of January, that we have to submit another sense of application to say, "We're still interested, we're gonna still move forward, at least looking into this." There is technical assistance available from the Mass Housing Partnership and other entities to at least help the town take a look. If you were ever going to do this, in essence, the question would be, where would be appropriate areas be for doing something like that? Doesn't mean Town Meeting's gonna say yes, but it does mean at least we move forward and engage with, and this is free assistance, technical assistance, to take a look at the town zoning map. It's probably gonna be along the Route eighteen corridor because in terms of transportation, so that's the most likely place to put something like that. But eventually, working with the planning board, working with the board selectmen, to at some point come to Town Meeting, make a proposal, Town Meeting can say no, and at some point, you know, will no longer be eligible. But I did want to tell the board I am still pursuing that, so if any question came up. Cyber audit grant, Ryan and I applied for this annual competitive grant from Meyer. We did receive ninety-five hundred dollars for my grant award, it's a reimbursable one, so that Ryan can work with a firm to consult the, conduct the cybersecurity audit. Basically, the idea is if you've got an insecure network, or people will test it out and see, can we get in? Are your procedures in place? Do people, you know, and it's helpful, then you say, "Okay, now we need to do X, Y, and Z to make it more secure." But in essence, it's now, you know, it's a presumed bad hat, but they're actually wearing the good hat. They're doing that for you. I think it was, you ever see the movie Sneakers with Robert Redford? Maybe twenty-five or thirty years ago, sorry, I'm dating myself. Okay, I tell you. If you, his, he had a-
Peter and I weren't old enough to watch these.
Yeah, right.
He, he-
I was in kindergarten.
He was in kindergarten, okay. But his firm actually did that type of work. They would, for instance, a bank might say, "Show us where, how someone might be able to take money from us without us knowing."
Yep.
And right at the beginning, there's a whole sequence of events showing them actually doing their heist, in essence, and being able to electronically get into the bank, and also physically get in the bank and show that in fact someone could just simply take a certain amount of money, and then they walk into the board of directors meeting saying, "Hey, you just gave us a check for this." Much larger than they would've gotten for the normal fee, for instance. So it's similar thing like that. Crosswalks and funding options, talking about Mast dot and Route eighteen. They did come back to say that we were looking at those two crosswalks by the library on Route eighteen. They did say, "Well, we don't have any money for you right now, and it's not up at the top of our list, but if you're ever gonna do something like this, we recommend the north crosswalk rather than the south crosswalk." So at some points, I'll talk to John and we'll see what funding opportunities there are. And then also, you know, and I'm gonna take John's advice, if there are any number of projects that are not Route eighteen projects, that the town is trying to move along with, whether it's simply repaving or reconstruction or making traffic improvements. You know, I would take John's advice to where that might appear if we were to ever use town funds, and where it might show up at some point in a capital plan. But at least we have some guidance from Mast dot, that if we wanted to move ahead, they at least would be on board, and they would suggest doing that north side rock rather than the south sidewalk. Economic development, there were two sections of the legislation signed by the governor earlier this month. It covers economic development funding in East Bridgewater. There's this nebulous thirty-three thousand shall be expended for local economic recovery. And I've already talked to Mary about it, actually. And she agrees, it's fairly nebulous. So I also wrote to the state and said, "You've got a dozen towns in the bill that say the same thing." You know, fifty thousand for this town, a hundred thousand for this town for economic recovery. What do you want us to be doing with this money? I don't think you just want us to be writing checks to various businesses and say, "Here, have a thousand dollars."
Hey, they're like Bill.
Just do a crosswalk.
Right. So we'll be finding out more. However, we're also getting a hundred and twenty thousand to be expended for costs associated with marketing of businesses, including but not limited to the creation of brochures, increasing presence of businesses on the town website, instructing local businesses for, of available state and federal assistance programs. So again, I've reached out to Mary, that's something that is in their wheelhouse. I'll find, you know, but once the state starts contacting me about contracts and such, I'll make sure, whether we'll have to go out to bid or not, that's a different one that came up. But I'd be interested in working with them so we can do those things. For instance, for the state and federal programs, you know, we can do some personal visits to businesses, we can get mailing out to the businesses, we can do training sessions and such. You know, "Do you have a business plan?" Well, maybe we'll have a training session. How do you do, even you're running a business, but you've never done a business plan. Maybe you should get one together and figure out where you want your business to be going, and where are you spending your money, where you, you know, where should you be spending your money? How, how would you get more money coming in? So there, that money's gonna be available for that. So as I said, I'm gonna be working with the state and OCPC on that. We already talked about electricity rates and aggregation, so I'm gonna skip over that. ARPA grant status. I gave you this, I'm sorry about the, I'm all typeface, but I wanted to get everything on one page. The, this is sort of the status, where we have money available from various sources, whether in the, in the town coffers or whether we're there Plymouth County. We have the list of grants where the board selectmen's already approved, which include the body cameras, the ambulance, and the sanitary sewer engineering. And then the list of grants where we got them, the twenty-seven grant applications we received. The ARPA committee's already started making recommendations. They've been meeting with the various applicants, reviewing the applications. What I think both the ARPA committee and myself and Melanie, our town accountant, need is a little more direction as to what the board wants us to be doing, in particular with Plymouth County, in that we need to figure out whether we should be sending applications into Plymouth County, even if you haven't actually made a decision about them, maybe based on the recommendations from the ARPA committee. But Plymouth County has said, "Do not send us more applications than you have money available to you right now." And only half the money that's been sort of set aside for East Bridgewater in Plymouth County is available to us right now. It's the same for all the other communities in Plymouth County. So, you know, we had one point three six million available to us from Plymouth County. We've basically spent six seventy-five by going with the ambulance and sanitary sewer engineering. That leaves us just short of seven hundred thousand. The ARPA committee, for instance, has already recommended about, I think, eight hundred thousand dollars in grant applications. So I can't send the whole, all, I think it's five of them up to Plymouth County for review yet. So, but ARPA and us need some guidance as to, you want us to start doing work with Plymouth County? Do you want to wait until the ARPA committees reviewed all the applications, made recommendations, and that you start making actual decisions before you go to Plymouth County? Because the application of Plymouth County is not so much, "Give us the money now." Our first question to them is, of the applications we're sending to you, which ones are gonna be eligible under Plymouth County's criteria?
Right.
Versus the town, the money that's available to the town is much, has a much broader set of possibilities.
Okay. Do you see John, Margie, Chair, it's here, do you want, John, you wanna come on up? Kind of, you know, we won't go too deep, too much detail with you, but my, my question, I mean, discussing this with Charlie last week, was has each department, whether it be the schools or rec or whoever, have they given you like a, like a, you know, top pick to-
Priority.
Right, thank you, yes, like a, you know, listed idea of like, "We really need this, and, you know, this is the way it lays out." Have they kind of-
Actually, the way it happened, we get, we got all the applications, we kind of went through them as a group.
Yep.
And we had established within the committee and with the help of Charlie and Melanie, and others, a criteria, okay, six or seven different things. And we would rate each application on each of the criteria, give it a one to three or one to five, I forget what the number, the merit was. At the end of reviewing that application, add up the totals for all the criteria. So then we ranked them. Whoever had the highest number of points would say be the first one on the list and have the most priority. And so then, that's the, or which we were going to review the applications, to go through them one by one by one. We moved along, I mean, the first week went well. Second week, we ran into a little bit of a road bump in that it was pointed out by us, but people that do this day in, day out, that work for the town. When you go out to buy, you know, a new playground set or whatever it might be, you have to put it out to bid, in order to put it out to bid, you have to create specs. In some cases, in the bigger projects, the spec itself can be fifty thousand dollars, right? So, I mean, these are just general numbers thrown around. So at that point, we said, "Well, is that money coming out of the bid, including the bid? So if somebody put in a bid for a hundred thousand dollars, it's fifty thousand dollars worth of specs. Do they have enough money to do whatever it is that they're trying to do to help the town?"
Right.
So we stepped back from that, and we said, "Well, we, we gotta, we gotta figure this out." And we figured we'd come to you guys and see how you wanted to do it. At the end of the day, it's really, I went back through the LFR interim final rule and trying to find something in there on those costs. It's like a thousand page, not really a thousand-page document, but more words than you ever wanna read, especially if you're blind like me. And I found one, one place where it says, talking about cost of something.
Yep.
So it says, the final rule, it starts off, and it says, "And acquisition, construction, pre-construction costs, operating costs, et cetera, allowed to be cost for projects." So I read that as, you know, I gotta go out to bid, it costs me fifty thousand dollars or five, whatever it is, five thousand dollars. That would be included across the project. Whether at the end of the day, when they come back with the bid and the specification, they can still do the project is unknown.
You're not sure it's even incorporated in this number for whatever it may be, like, you know, whatever, whatever the project is.
Right, so if I just finish up here, Charlie. So for the projects we have, we go by their numbers.
Right.
And to, I think to stop the process and have everybody go back and try and figure out these numbers is not, not gonna be conducive to getting the job done.
Yep, yep.
So, you know, my thought was to bring to you guys tonight, and essentially, as we go forward, the applications we've been doing, assuming if it says two hundred thousand dollars, we're approving, we're not approving, we're recommending two hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
And as they come up to you, you, you may wanna be in the position where you can say to applicant A, "Well, you need to get your specs on this, cause we need, this needs to go according to the state bidding process for bids, and this is what you need to do." And just include it across the project.
Right.
You know, when the numbers are finalized, then you can decide on whether you're gonna approve it.
There you go. I mean, you know, based on what Charlie had said, but we only got so much, and what, seven hundred thousand?
Available from the county at this point.
At this point, it might be smarter to, you know, have you guys finish your process, figure out what those, what those projects are that may add to more money based on having to go out and, you know, start to approve the ones, or at least push the ones forward that we know are pretty straightforward, right? And go from there. But I agree, I mean, I'll let David and Carol speak to it, but I agree. I think you continue with the process in evaluating and reviewing all the, all the projects. And then, you know, we talked about it a little bit, a week or two ago, whatever the hell it was, about, you know, just wanting you guys to kind of go through all of the, all of the items so that we're not gonna go doing it back and forth, you know?
Right.
Get it done, and then we could meet with you and then discuss, based on each department, let's call it, right? The schools or rec or whatever, and then, you know, have a meeting regarding what your thoughts were on, on each of those, and then we can certainly, you know, start with, with whoever's running the show for that department.
I think that would be great, and there'd be the opportunity, therefore, say it's the schools.
Yep.
Well, schools, what do you think is the most important?
Yeah.
That, that, and do like that.
Yeah.
Take a lot, a lot from the process.
Yep.
I think it would make sense too to make note of the items that we know are gonna require going out to bid, you know, where some are, cause what's, the threshold now is fifteen thousand?
Well, ten to fifty requires three quotes at the very least, fifteen over a lot.
Quotes isn't, isn't as big, that is going up.
Quotes isn't a big deal.
No, but you-
It's when you have to do more or get specs for, you know, a big, a big project, so like, you know.
Honestly, though, I don't think there's anything under fifteen thousand.
No.
I doubt there is, where.
The outdoor movie system.
I heard that one, it's very highly touted.
I heard, I heard there was a lot of pressure to get that one approved.
I can't believe it's not recommended yet.
That's our government's winter time.
It's the only time it wouldn't get eaten alive by mosquitoes, right?
But no, I think David, on three, I mean, just go to-
Yeah, we've talked, we, we know these are not all, obviously, all gonna go through. And there has to be some kind of prioritization. And I'm not too sure, before it comes to us, if some of these are just not going to make it, they don't meet the criteria to begin with. Eliminate those right away.
Yep.
Right.
Take out of these twenty-seven, I think, take off the ones that are just not going to happen.
Right.
Because they can't.
Right, and our, our biggest concern, this is mine-
A million dollars for turf installation at the softball field might be-
Right. The thing that I think we, we talked about long, most importantly, is, is it's not going to be an ongoing cost, right? So it's, you know, and what that cost may be toward that project. I mean, there gotta be some things for upkeep and maintenance, of course, that will be, but, you know, putting someone in a position or something like that where we're-
But they have to be limited on maintenance and, and future, the same as, again, if we're, if we're creating a, a position. Well, three years from now, when this recommendation is gone, where we're going, cause that was the criteria that was set up.
Yep.
You know, that this thing, you know, twenty twenty-four, you know, we've made our final recommendations, I guess twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Then it shouldn't be coming back to another budget increase the following year after that. And this is what, we have to be very careful about when we, when we, the final recommendation, recommendation comes down to this board.
And that did come up in, you know, one of the applications that we've gone through. And I think we said during the meeting, is, well, is this gonna end in two years?
Right.
And the agreement was there, you know, that's, that's a verbal thing.
Right.
Who knows what's gonna happen?
Right, and maybe they find other funding somewhere else, or grants, or whatever that one is, yeah, that's not on us.
I don't know if there's some way you, as when you approve it, can put that paragraph in there.
Well, put something on it.
This'll end in twenty twenty-six. This will end in 2026.
We're not rolling this into the budget.
We, we could put anything in.
A little asterisk.
No, yeah, I, I mean, I appreciate the, you know, the time. I've sat in on a couple of the meetings that you guys have had. And it's been interesting to hear some of the, some of the, some of the items on the list. But if you would continue that process, I think that would be the, don't slow it down, right?
Yeah, you've got a good group.
Just to go back to something that got out of my head. As far as the 700,000 and the 1.3 millions and all that, we were just going to go through and have the projects ready, whether, you know, we have money left to spend at that time. But that way, the work is done and there's more detailed digging that needs to be done. We can focus on that.
Yeah, we can bring it back to the table if that's the way.
That's the way to do it, yeah.
Yeah, let, let's get the, the list done, bring it in, recommendations, and then we can do our question and answer. And if we, there's another process that we, we'd want to have, you know, we'll certainly bring you guys back to, to do that. But we don't want to keep you there for a couple of years, right?
And some of the-
Not going to happen.
You know, this, this transfers over to the finance committee. Like, you're on this, you're on this committee, and then it's automatic. You have to go to the finance committee for at least three years.
You have 16 years in the finance.
You paid, you paid your dues over there.
Some of these projects can be paid for in a different way.
Yeah, absolutely.
After the fact. You know, with the grants and so on.
The only question I have is, what do you, how do you want Melanie and myself to deal with Plymouth County? Not send anything until you actually make-
Yeah, until we make this in.
The money's still going to be ours.
Okay. So, yeah, I wouldn't do anything until these guys have completed their process.
Two years from now.
Just, Charlie and Melanie and Laura and, you know, the town representatives, Dave Ross, done a great job, too, as well as the people that were on the, actually voting on the committee. Appreciate their help.
Yes, appreciate you guys.
Very cumbersome project.
Really does. Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Misses, don't you, John?
The digital equity planning application, I'm going to be sending that in. The ARPA funding is not just the money we're getting. There are a lot, a lot of pots. One of them is to expand digital access across the country. And each state is getting a pot of money to do that. And then some of that money can be used with individual communities to see, you know, for planning grants and then implementation grants. I'm going to be applying for the money for a planning grant. It will at least allow us to look at, in fact, what is digital access here? I mean, I, you know, is it, is it accessible to everybody? Is it affordable for everybody? Do people have devices? Do people know how to use the internet and such? So I'll be wor- the state would then hire a consultant to work with the town to investigate that and get a study, but I'll be working on that. Master plan grant, the town received a $75,000 grant through the One Stop Growth Program. What I'm recommending is that the board contract with OCPC. Obviously, we have to sign a formal agreement, but informally to say to them, "Yes, you're our, the firm that we want to work with to develop a new master plan." Am I you? I'm definitely, I'm going to be bringing the planning board in on this because under state statute, the planning board has jurisdiction over master plans. So I'll be talking to Roy and the planning board members, you know, moving forward with OCPC. But I needed the board's direction, okay, to contact OCPC.
Absolutely. I think we should set an office up for Mary somewhere in her building.
So if the board were to approve doing that formally, please?
Yep, I make a motion to approve the state grant for the master plan recommendation for the contractor for $35,000 of water toll colony planning council.
Second.
Question made second, further discussion? Seeing that on favor?
Aye.
And then last on my list, DPW vehicle lift replacement motor. We bought the new ambulance, obviously, a few months ago. It's 17,000 pounds. The lift at DPW is only 15,000 pounds. It can't lift the ambulance. So we need it, we don't need entirely new lift. We do need a new motor that can handle the weight. The cost for that is about $9,000. Neither the fire department nor the DPW has in their budget. I know the-
I mean, Tim just threw out $1,000 like it was nothing.
This is emergency management.
This is emergency, it's the ambulance.
This sounds like an emergency. This is, this sounds like an emergency.
I would like, I would like the board's support for me to go back to the finance committee as conservative as they have been so far this year, but to explain the situation to them and why it's necessary and hope that they would fund that if I have the board's support to do that.
Yep.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's, I just-
Yours. Board discussions, opiate funding, is that something you need to?
We have received our first payment of $34,000, give or take a few dollars. But what we've talked about, and again, we'll ask Charlie to pursue this, is to get together with some other towns and take this money, put it together. It's going to be a very long, complicated process. We put it together, how do we expend it? How do we do this? How do we do that? But the $34,000 a year, and this is over 20 years, I mean, it's just, it's not much you can do. I mean, you can only buy so much knock-in, but if we can get some other, you know, towns to join us, I'm sure Brockton Mall, because they're getting million, Plymouth Mall, they're getting million, but all the other towns around us, if we can set up some kind of a, a system, bring in their representative from each town, collaborate and see how we can put everything together to spend this money. I said East Bridgewater was one of the first ones to jump on board this, you know, five or six years ago. But now we have to take that next step. And how can we use this to benefit the, the town? The opioid addiction is not getting any better. It's getting much worse. And I think that's because we came out of COVID and now we see it more. And under COVID, we didn't, but it, the, the numbers are astronomical these days.
Right, well, so. All right, Carol, anything?
Big weekend for the town.
Big weekend for the town.
Tree lighting on Thursday night.
Six thirty?
6:30 on the common, tree judging, tree lighting. And then Saturday morning, the parade, and Christmas on the common at the high school afterwards, so. Come on out.
I'm looking forward to it. Crab show and trees are for sale across from town hall. Carol was already stealing one before the meeting.
I was picking out the tree for the gazebo.
Right, that's what her story is.
Putting lights on it on Wednesday, although I heard it's going to be Raymond's.
That's right.
I'd have to read.
Well, I want to thank, I want to thank the, the schools and DPW and the police and the fire and especially the winner, the champ-
Oh, yeah.
Of our, of our can drive, food pantry drive. I think we donated over 7,000 pieces. It was more than the largest we've ever had after 10 years. But yes, the town hall won the, the contest. I'm not going to say who the worst was, but he's not in the building any longer. So, him or his deputy chief another two years.
You understand you are being taped.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. But no, everybody was-
The vehicle has been taped.
Yeah, right, everybody was very supportive. And me and John, and he grabbed a couple of town employees as well to help gather everything. And we brought St. John's and up to the church on Union, and it was great. But, go ahead, what, how many was it? It was like, how many items? I mean, it was, it was, it was probably almost as big as two of the schools, is what you did here.
I don't, I don't remember the exact number, but it was, yeah, everyone was really generous.
You know, you know by item, you know what was there.
And she knows exactly who brought one or two.
No doubt.
I guess look at a little- Two boxes, she want to know what the next one was.
That's it. Little pizza party coming up in the next two, yeah, so. Again, thank you. Yeah, well, you, listen, you might get a slice, but-
He gets the crust.
Yeah, that's it. You're going to have to, if they lock the doors, you'll be looking in the windows. But thank you again, everybody that was involved. It was a great turnout and very well received by both food pantries. That's it, that's all I got.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into executive session not to return pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase exchange lease value of real property. Castle Loma Property off Robbins Pond, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on negotiation position of the public body in pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, but to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, firefighters, clerical, DPW dispatches, patrol officers. Again, we will not be returning.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, Mr. Goan Chair?
Aye, Carol, Julius.
Aye.
Please, Jim.
All right.
I couldn't remember my name for a second.
Right, I was going to help you there.
Thank you.